Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The date is November 18th, 2020. This is your regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting. This meeting is being recorded, audio and video. It's not being broadcast live. And it will be streamed on Channel 9 and on YouTube after the meeting. You can provide public input using the following methods. So even though we're remote this evening, that hasn't affected how you can provide your public input. And that's via email, the number listed on the agenda, or via Zoom, using the meeting ID and passcode and link as listed on the agenda. And so with that, I ask that everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And at this time, I ask that everybody remain standing. Selectmen Gulat, if you can hear me, do you want to lead us in the moment of silence?
I think she's muted.
You have to press star six, I believe, Selectmen Gulat, to unmute.
Brett?
I can hear you.
Brett, the information that was sent to me, the Zoom address, when I click on this address, it says something about a pop-up blocked. Now, I had a Zoom meeting with MMA today, a problem.
Yeah, it's probably your pop-up blocker, so I apologize. Let's stay on the line after the meeting and I'll help you with that, okay?
Okay.
And then we're just at the moment of silence, Selectmen Gulat.
Okay, sorry.
No, it's okay. Do you want to lead us in that?
Yeah, just a minute. Mr. Chairman, I would like to mention the passing of Dayton resident Thomas Costa since our last meeting. And in his memory, request a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you. So first on our agenda this evening is a scheduled appointment with Chief McDonald regarding the use of the firing range. And I just wanted to mention, this discussion was prompted because we received an inquiry from a resident regarding shooting during the day on excessive days, I believe it was last week, and also on Sunday. And so Chief, as you know, we sat down. And when we compared notes on use of the firing range, I believe it was clear that the use, those shots fired on those days and on Sunday were not from the police department's use of the shooting range. And so I don't know if you have any other information regarding this, but I did want to yield the floor to you, sir.
Okay. Good evening, Selectmen. You all can hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. As far as the range now, first, I saw the email that came from Selectmen Gulat that she received a resident having an issue with the firearms being shot on that Sunday. There was not one department, Taunton or us, who are down there on that Sunday. We don't do that on Sundays. I know I've been seeing a pickup truck down there in front of the animal control building.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that person is firing down at the range or they're just walking around in the area as a hunter. I know who it is. I haven't spoke to him yet, but I'm going to give him a call. But I understand that someone gave him permission to walk down there. And I don't know if he should be walking down there. That's, as far as I'm concerned, no one should be down there.
You mean the transfer station?
Yes.
Yeah.
He parked in there and he could have been there on that Sunday, shooting at the range or shooting in the woods back there. I don't know. I can't say he was. But he's been out there this past week. I've seen the truck parked in the parking lot like 3:00, 3:30, 4 o'clock. So I don't know what he's doing out there. And I don't know who's giving permission. But my goal is to give him a call and ask what his reasons for being there for that. So if it's him, I don't know. I can't say it is.
Sure. Can I ask you another question about this, Chief?
Sure.
So I know, at least I'm under the impression, and I think I'm correct, that it's bird hunting season right now, correct?
Yes.
So is it not possible that the shots that, because I also heard them, and I'm pretty sure Selectmen Gulat heard them as well. I guess my question is, is it not possible that these are just individuals' bird hunting? Like legally, bird hunting?
It could be. It could be, you know?
I guess it's just unclear to me how we're going to find out if this is someone who is, you know, just on their property legally hunting birds right now, I guess? Or on the water, hunting birds or geese or whatever? Or if this is someone who is accessing the shooting range without authorization?
Without permission, correct.
Yeah.
So let me just talk about the range a little bit. So as you know, that range has been there probably for three years now. The members aboard now, we signed an agreement, I'm sure all you remember that, that Taunton came aboard. So we had the range for one year just ourselves, the Dayton police. And then Taunton was interested if they could use it. We sat down, the agreement was signed by this board, myself, Chief Walsh from Taunton Police, our town attorney, and the mayor, who was Thomas Hoyer at the time, who was not there now. And everybody signed it. They came aboard the next year. So they came in 2018. So we've basically been using the range for, let's say, three years now. So how it works is Taunton, actually, their last day was today for the qualifying. So their training is done. As far as a group that goes there, they don't go every day. They set a schedule up. Depends how many men they want there on the range. They generally start 9:00 in the morning. It gets done, I would say, 2:00, 2:30. And how it works is if they're going to be there, they notify either the dispatcher here, and most of the time, they notify my firearms instructor, which is Patrolman Steele. So he knows that they're going to be there. I have him there when, not all the time, but sometimes I have him there when Taunton is in there and we're not. So we have a Dayton police officer there in case we have any problems in there. If someone does call, we can notify him that someone has a complaint. I can tell you, we don't have a lot of complaints. And how it works is there's a red flag that we have down there. It's near where the animal control building is. So we told the residents, and I saw Selectmen Gulat's email about the flag for the people across the street. And I agree with about, what about everybody else that's in the area? They don't know what that means. But if the police departments are there, we put the red flag up, meaning we are out there, a police department, if it's us, if it's Taunton. So that way, if someone in the area, which is basically the people across the street, see that flag down and there's firearms, there's shots being fired, we tell the people to call. If the red flag's up, it means that Taunton Police are there or the Dayton Police are there. So that's how we basically have been doing it. And it's been working pretty good. So like I said, Taunton was done today, their training. We are doing our training after Thanksgiving. So it'll be that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So we'll be there three days and then we'll be done. So that should be the end of that for the year. Maybe we should sit down and figure out how we want to let other people know or at least give them a heads up that, yes, the police are going to be out there. So they're aware of it. And I understand that the resident who had a complaint about it, I get it. And it was a Sunday, and I can't blame the gentleman for having a problem with it. I mean, no one should be out there. And I know we don't go out there on a Sunday, Taunton Police don't go out there on a Sunday. So maybe we should, maybe sit down and maybe we can come up with something to straighten everything out if there's issues going down further, you know?
I'm happy to hear, Chief, sorry I was muted, that it sounds like the original complaint wasn't related to activity from our department. If we want to have a conversation about perhaps a broader notification system, which can be used to communicate that the range is about to be used or when it's going to be used. I do have questions about just like a safety concern about just putting the hours of use out there. But I think we could probably craft a communication in a way where we can get the word out and still maintain some confidentiality, just for the safety of the officers that are using the range, Chief.
Yes.
Colleagues?
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Yeah. I guess I don't understand your concern then about the safety of the officers if that information is public. So I guess I'm not following you in that. Why would we not want to let the public know prior to it being used?
So I guess I should have elaborated and I apologize. In the original email that we received, Selectmen Pacheco, there were certain questions that were asked, such as the names of officers that were there doing the shooting. So I guess that's what I'm alluding to, Brett.
Yeah, I'm not interested in doing that.
Yep.
So can they do it on Saturday also? Do we know? I know they can't do it on Sunday.
Yes, Selectmen Pacheco, we do it on Saturday. Sometimes. It's not all the time. Most of the time, it'll be a Monday through Friday.
Yeah. Yeah, you referenced the board agreeing to this. Now, I wasn't part of the board. I'm sure I would have supported it. But I wasn't part of the board when this was first arranged. I'm not fully aware of all the regulations and all the requirements. So how often is it being used? On the average for each year, how often is it used?
By months, it would probably start in late September and run to at least right before Thanksgiving or the week after. And that's not, that wouldn't be every week either. It would vary. Because what happens is Taunton Police holds an in-service training, and our guys do go to that. And what they have is, part of the in-service training is the firearms range, which they have to attend. So there'd be certain dates where, certain weeks that they might go one day a week. So let's say it starts in September, middle of September, end of September. So during the week, the day they go, the range, it might be a Thursday. That's when they do their schedule. I mean, that's how they do firearms. That's what they do when they have to call for a TESA also. So they pick that, there'll be a class Wednesday. That's what they're going to pick the day for, do the range.
And how much notification do you get or your department gets that they're going to use it?
What happens is when they come out with the schedule for the in-service, we will get, when firearms dates will be, that'll be done.
Okay.
See, this year was different, Selectmen Pacheco, because of the COVID, they didn't have in-service. Now they're going to suppose that they're hoping to start in-service in January. But it won't be the firearms. It won't be that.
Yeah.
This wouldn't be probably, this won't start again probably till, like I said, next September.
Yeah.
Chief?
Yes.
I guess my last question is, and I apologize to everyone, I'm not ignoring, there are people trying to get into the meeting, so I have to look and allow them in. So I apologize. Regarding the use of this, my understanding, and I could be wrong, so please correct me if I'm wrong. It's not a set schedule for use of the range. It's more when someone is newly hired and needs to be trained. I do understand you have certain quals that you probably have to do every year or on a certain timeline. And so having consecutive days of shooting probably isn't something that would get scheduled into Sunday? Because last week, it was literally like Wednesday through Sunday, every day, you know, around 1:00 or 2:00 PM.
Yeah. It depends. Like I said, there's some days that you might get two or three days that'll be up there. And this is because, the reason why now you had the consecutive days too is because they just started this training for the firearms now, because, like I said, because in-service was canceled. So they're just doing their yearly qualifications that they have to do. So that's why you got so many days in a row, like you said, a Wednesday to a Sunday. And Taunton is much bigger than us, so they have to qualify a lot more guys than we have. So that's why it took those days in a row that they had to fit all these guys in.
Thank you, Chief. Selectmen Gulat?
Yeah. I just checked back some old emails when I was contacted. And I noticed the dates that I responded were, I was talking about the 6th and 7th of November. After I got the initial email, I did call dispatch and I was assured that it was practice and for certification and that there were at least 10, quote, "guys," unquote, down at the range with an instructor. And they were doing what they were supposed to be doing. I can also tell you that in all the years I've lived in this area, I have never heard as many shots as I did that day. So when I got the email, I understood what the person was saying. I will also say that my comment was that the red flag works if you're driving by or if you live in the neighborhood. But if you live where I do or where others who were concerned about the shooting live, they're not going to drive down the street a ways to find out if the flag is out. So I don't know if we can announce ahead of time, I'll put it on Channel 9, that don't be disturbed, there's going to be practice and certification going on at the range. And so people know. But I will tell you, I had never heard that much shooting and it was rapid fire. I even wondered if we were training with automatic weapons. And then the next few days were quiet. But I can tell you, this past Sunday, late in the afternoon, I was working in the yard and there was a lot of shooting. And I kept thinking, gee, it's Sunday afternoon. I thought it was funny. I didn't call dispatch. I assumed it was, again, target practice or whatever. To address Mr. Pacheco's, Ken Pacheco's comment, this goes back quite a ways, Mr. Pacheco. And I'm thinking, I believe it was when I came back to the board in '15. I believe it may have been right after or when Selectmen Segraffis got elected. But I can't remember if when we agreed to have, to give Taunton permission to practice and to do training, if the other person on the board was Selectmen Cronin or Selectmen Taylor. But I remember it came up. I know we discussed it. The chief gave us a recommendation, you know, and it was, you know, I was fine with it. I think the only situation that we are dealing with is on those particular days, the shooting seemed to be constant and the weather was fairly nice. So, you know, if you had the window open or whatever. Although I can tell you, the first time it happened, I could hear it with all my windows closed. So when I saw the email and read of the concern, that's when I checked with dispatch. So, you know, I don't have a problem with use of the firing range and I don't have a problem with allowing Taunton to come down. I think if we can just get the word out ahead of time to let people know this is coming up. And let's say for two hours or four hours on a given date, you're going to hear gunfire. But I think it was because it lasted so long that it was upsetting to people. So that's what I know about it.
Selectmen Gulat, what'd you say, the 6th and 7th?
Yeah, that's the dates of my emails.
Okay. Yeah, I saw the email and you responded. I saw that was a good email that you sent to him. And I understand his concerns too. I really do. I understand what he's, you know. And, but I know for the 7th that we weren't out there and Taunton wasn't out there either. So the 6th, it could have been. I have to check the schedule. But I know the 7th that they weren't definitely out there. No one was. So somebody was either out there in the woods somewhere, hunting or something, somebody was out there. So that I know.
I don't think it was hunting because I'm used to hearing gunshots from hunters. Anyone that was getting off that number of shots in the rapid fire, if they were shooting at anything, it was shredded. It was not, it was not what we're all used to.
Rapid fire though?
It was just one after another. And sometimes it was like there was more than one person shooting because the shots were too close together. And I think most of us living out here know what a shotgun sounds like or know what a, I'll call it a hunting gun, sounds like. And this definitely wasn't that.
So, yes. So what we could do is, I'm going to make a suggestion. Like I said, our department will be qualifying after Thanksgiving, the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I believe Taunton is done with their training. I'll make sure, verify that to make sure. And maybe, you know, after, and the winter's coming, of course. So this won't, we won't be out there again till, like I said, September or when in-service training starts for next year. I mean, maybe come up with some type of thing that we can notify the residents. Something, we can come up with something.
Sounds good, Chief. Does anyone have a, are you, Chief, you're going to take this back internally and come up with a way for this to be communicated? Either a press release or something on social media or however?
What I'll do is I'll sit with my firearms instructor, my sergeant, and we'll have a discussion and a meeting and see what we can come up with, something, you know, going forward for when we go back out there.
Thank you, Chief.
And they were up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I didn't know if you heard, but Taunton was out there today. So I don't know if you heard any firing out there, because I heard it from the station.
I actually didn't.
I didn't notice it today. And I was here because I had an MMA meeting. I didn't notice anything today. Just a question to the chief. Chief, is that firing range open to the public?
No.
So that's another concern. If there is a way to control it for its intended purpose, which means professional police officers who are, whether it's target practice or getting training or being tested for certification, that's fine. And if anybody else wants to use that range, they're going to have to get permission, I would say through the police department, so that we don't have people showing up with guns and just randomly having target practice and disrupting the quiet of the neighborhood.
Exactly. And like I said, I got to talk to this gentleman. I've seen his truck, I know who it is. I've seen his truck down there all week. And it's 3:30, 4 o'clock, and he's parked in front of, like I told you, in front of the animal control building. And if he's down there shooting or if he's just walking around back there, I don't know. But I got to contact him to find out who gave him permission to be there because it's been there a couple of days this week.
Chief, can I ask you one last question? I drove by, maybe, I can't remember if it was this weekend that just happened or the weekend before. And there were a lot of pickup trucks parked outside the animal control facility, shelter. And I didn't know if that is where Taunton or Dayton officers normally park to access the shooting range?
Yes, that's where they park, Dr. Z. They park in there and then they walk in. Or you actually can drive down there at that gate. If it's open, you can drive down there. But I mean, you're better off using a truck than a car. You don't want to drive, you wouldn't drive your car down there. But yeah, that's where they park and they go down there.
Thank you, Chief.
Dr. Z?
Oh, sorry, yes, Selectmen Gulat?
Just one other thought.
Sure.
How about if we get it, the access areas posted, no trespassing, authorized personnel only, per audit, Dayton Police Department, period. If they go there and they're not there for the reasons that were, it's intended for, or they didn't get permission from the police department, they're trespassing. And obviously, our police will respond if it turns into, you know, just a bunch of people shooting without permission.
Yeah, that was talked about too, about posting signs down there and a couple of other things we discussed too, that it might work too, doing other things down there. So yeah, that's a good idea.
Selectmen Pacheco?
Yeah, so just for clarification then, the only people that can use it is the Taunton Police Department and the Dayton Police Department. So no public, no one else can use it. Is that correct, Chief?
That's correct, Selectmen Pacheco.
Okay, so I would like some form of notification then for those dates that the chief just spoke about, so that the public is aware that they're going to be using the range.
Chief, if I can make a suggestion. If this notification/communication is going to be something, you know, your department plans to use regularly when the range is going to be used, you might want to come up with a boilerplate where you can just insert dates. So you don't have to, or someone doesn't have to do it, write a memo every single time or whatever you end up doing. Just a suggestion.
Yep. Yeah, we'll come up with something, something that we can, you know, be done and make it work.
Absolutely. Anybody have anything else on this? Selectmen Pacheco, Selectmen Gulat?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I would just say, because I was on the board when we agreed and we gave Taunton permission, I look at this like sort of mutual aid. We have a good relationship with the Taunton Police Department. And I certainly don't want to point fingers at anybody, but I also don't want to lose the opportunity for us to help Taunton out and to have the range used for its intended purpose.
I can tell you, Taunton Police is well appreciated that they can come down here and use this range. They're very thoughtful and thanking us for that. Because like I said, they do the in-service program over there and all our officers go to in-service and do their training in-service over there. And I'll tell you, they run a good program over there. So I like Selectmen Gulat said, we have a good relationship with them and I don't want to lose that.
Absolutely, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, board.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good night. You too.
Mrs. Gales, I apologize, we're a few minutes late, but thank you for being, thank you for being patient. We started a little late this evening. You're here to provide us an update on the survey and planning grant. And so I will yield the floor. I did just want to update the board, just for transparency. We did sign, or I did sign, a letter of intent. And that was because, as Mrs. Gales will elucidate, the project or the, I guess, yeah, the project slightly changed in terms of the steps that the Historical Commission will take in order to bring this inventory to fruition and then future grants through the Historical Register. Mrs. Gales, I wanted to yield the floor to you.
Thank you. Originally, our intent was to write a grant, the letter of intent for the survey and planning grant for a historical preservation plan. However, in talking with representatives from the Massachusetts Historical Commission, they advise strongly that we consider updating our present inventory first. Because in doing historical preservation, the first piece of it is to identify what you have in your towns as your historical resources and then make a plan for it. We do have a significant number of properties that are identified on the inventory through the Massachusetts Historical Commission. However, a lot of them are outdated or incomplete. And it was a massive undertaking that previous historical commissions and our town historians worked on. So this would be a building on what they started in order for us to get a plan. Because the first steps would be to identify what we have, make sure we clearly know what those are, and then evaluate what they qualify for. Are they National Register eligible, local historic district eligible? what they qualify for. Are they National Register eligible, local historic district eligible? Um, and how would we go about preserving them and protecting them? So it's a building block. Um, the letter of intent was mailed in, so it's there. This letter of intent would have many steps to it. We would be invited, if our letter is accepted, we would be invited by December ninth to um, we would be invited to their meeting for further information on uh, the grant and filling out the grant. The grant is due by March. Now, the full application is due in February and the awards would be made in March for the grant. Um, the timeline, excuse me.
No worries.
Okay. No one ever calls.
Murphy's Law.
So the timeline would be, um, if we get the grant, we would start in uh, July of twenty twenty one. Actual work by a preservation consultant would be um, start in September of twenty twenty one and end in June twenty twenty two. So. Um. Basically, that's it. Why we, why we changed. Do we kind of want to have the um, identification first? Excuse me. Pam, I'll call you back. That, that was another Historical Commission thing. Um, so anyway.
You got a lot of balls uh, in the air you're juggling. I like it.
Just right here at six thirty, you know? Presently, the Dayton Historical Commission is working on our own identification process. It's volunteer work and we're kind of slow on it. By looking at the Form Bs, Marina Santos, the town historian, had put together um, all of the Form Bs that she could find. That through Town Hall, the Historical Society, and put them in a notebook for us and comparing those to the tax assessors listing of houses that are a hundred plus years old. So we're in the process of doing that. And then the plan is to take a look at those um, properties. Which ones have Form Bs, which is an inventories on the Mass Historical Commission um, website that the whole state uses to identify uh, resources. And then um, which, you know, what do we need to do with these Form Bs? Do we need to update them or whatever? Uh, not only is it houses that we identify as historical resources, it's landmarks, areas, cemeteries, um, structures. Those, those are five categories, I think they are. So.
Can I, can I ask you a question about that, Mrs. Gales? I know this is getting a little ahead of myself, but once you update the inventory, you have a plan developed. How does the commission figure out which of those five categories something falls into? Like, let's say there's a bunch of what we would consider historic buildings sprinkled amongst houses in a certain area. How do you determine, okay, this will be, instead of doing each house as historic, we'll do a historic district? How does that decision get made?
I'm not really sure how the local historic districts work. Um, I do know that there were some areas already defined for us um, that were done. I believe the Mount Hope one was done like in two thousand and three. I didn't recognize the name on who did that, but it encompassed um, Mount Hope, you know, the factories, the village, North Dayton Village, the park area, um, with a good number of those houses listed. So I guess you would decide on your boundaries and what, how much is really in there. Um, we do have um, two National Register Historic Districts already. One is on Pleasant Street, the Worf District, and one is on Water Street, the Quorum Shipyard District. Um, and those each have, I believe, the Pleasant Street one has about four or five houses. The Quorum Shipyard has three properties, I believe.
Three homes on Pleasant Street?
Yeah.
The McKean House on the houses on either side, left to right, and then the Worf's across the street. That's the district.
Is that, um, Darius Perry's house in there? The one that was next to the Eddie House?
I'm not sure. All I can tell you is if you, the current McKean House, the current, the Marino House on one side and the other house uh, on the uh, both left and right of the McKean properties, that's the historic district.
Right.
Across the street, the Worf's.
Yeah. And the Customs House might be in that too. So we'd go, um.
Was the Customs House somebody's barn?
No.
No, that was where.
It's Ellen Cassidy's house.
Yeah. Mrs. Cassidy's house.
If it's not the three I'm talking about, it's not in the district. Cause I remember when that happened, uh, it was a big event, to tell you the truth.
Yeah. And I know they did, um, they started like a local historic district um, for the Water Street and Pleasant Street, lower Pleasant Street, I think, area. Um.
Yes, there are, there are very old homes there, but for some reason, um, the Quorum Shipyard area was, I'll call it singled out.
Right.
But, and those houses didn't end up being listed, and yet they are very, very old.
Right, right. Yeah. Cause my mom's house was in one of, it was in that area. So.
So I have a question.
Yep.
Um, in nineteen sixty-two, when they were preparing for the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, one of the things they did was go around and identify all the historic homes. And they made wooden sign plaques with dates on them. Do you have that inventory from back then? I realize some homes are gone since then. But I was thinking, if you had that inventory, that's a good place to start.
I haven't seen that inventory listing per se, and I do know the signs that you're talking about. Um.
So, um, I would suggest, um, Frank Torres had all of the records, excuse me, from the two hundred and fiftieth. I believe he had tapes and all sorts of things. I remember him saying to me when we were talking about the three hundred. He said, if anybody wants anything, it's all in my basement. They gave it to me because they said I was the youngest selectman and would probably be alive for the three hundredth, which he was. And, and maybe if somebody could contact uh, Mrs. Torres or his, his daughter and find out where all of that um, documentation, films, whatever. Um, because he said to me, if you know anybody that wants it, and I said, well, hold on to it for right now because, you know, we're working on the three hundredth, but not doing, you know, the historic homes again. So that might be a, a contact for you.
They have all of that, if they have all of that information, that would be good to have anyway for historic purposes.
Yeah, and they'd probably like to get it out of their basement. But he did, uh, Mr. Torres did tell me that.
Okay. Um.
Mrs. Gales, so it's my understanding then, if you get this grant, it's twelve thousand five hundred dollars, we're asking for matching funds from CPC?
What we're doing, we have to ask for the full funding first. And we're, I did put in a letter of um, application of eligibility to the CPC. And actually, I'm going to meet with them tomorrow night, um, asking them for the twenty-five thousand. Um, once the project is completed and you put in all of your paperwork verifying that you've completed it, then um, you're reimbursed the twelve thousand five hundred.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gales, um, I assume after you get, um, and I think you actually covered this, after you get this money for MACRIS, um, which is the inventory system that you will, or the consultant will assist in uh, having updated. I assume you'll apply eventually for another survey and planning grant as you had originally intended for the Historic Preservation Plan?
Oh, yes. In the long, yeah, long-term plan, yeah, yeah.
And so at that time, I guess my question is, um, there's more than enough money in the CPC historical designation for um, both rounds? I think there is, if I recall.
I, I don't know what their funding is like, you know? Um, I've never worked with them before, so I'm sure this will be, you know, a good experience.
Yep.
Um, yes, but that would be the long-term plan because the Massachusetts Historical Commission offers a survey and planning grant every year. So there's a new round. Um, so I would imagine they'd like to see us, uh, the little towns like being successful in pres- preservation. And in the letter of intent, I did um, let them know, you know, like we have lost some significant properties. Um, and we might not be able to prevent that, but that's a goal is to try to prevent that kind of loss. And some of that is through education and through public programs. Um, and the commission is set for goals is um, like educating the public. That's part of our mission statement of the history of Dayton. And also, um, we've instituted a historical marker plaque program, similar to the one that was at the two hundred and fiftieth. Um. But the owners can buy the plaque after their application has been approved through the Historical Commission. And the historical marker um, application is on the town website under the Historical Commission for those houses that are interested. The owners of the houses that are, you know, are older homes. And it's a nice looking plaque. Um, we do have one that has already been awarded, and that was to the Historical Society for the Winslow Davis House.
Fabulous. Mrs. Gales, maybe we can talk offline and um, I know sometimes some things get buried on the website. Um, and so people will have to click through a lot of links to the Historical Commission site. Maybe we can brainstorm on blasting out um, the link to that application with maybe a brief blurb on what it is to the email subscribers, to the Town of Dayton account. Um, so let's put our heads together on that. Cause I suspect you will get more applications. It just may be that people, you know, we assume people watch our meetings and, but people don't. People lead busy lives, especially during the pandemic. So um, let's try to make um, um, that application more well-known.
Okay, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Awesome.
Uh, Dr. Z? Um, Mrs. Gales, uh, just some other info in case you don't know this. Um, when Krista Peyton was superintendent and director of the Aggie School, uh, that was during the Berkeley-Dighton Bridge construction project. She told me about the interest there was to have the Standish House uh, designated as historic. And since that time, obviously, the, the school has celebrated its one hundredth anniversary. And there was further discussion of trying to get that entire campus designated as a historic site. And I believe by then, the small house, the last house on the left before you cross the river, I believe that's over a hundred years old. Uh, the, obviously, the significance of the Standish House is the connection to Miles Standish. And also, Mrs. Standish was connected to the Goodings of the Gooding Clock Shop. So after Mrs. Peyton passed, I don't know if anything else has been done, but maybe Mrs. Adele Sands, the current superintendent director, might have some info on what happened to that, uh, I'll call it initiative, uh, because they, they, they felt that they had a good chance because of the uh, uh, when you talk about designating a site, that entire farm uh, would be involved. And also the Thurba Wood Farm, even though the house is gone now, but that house was historic, over on one thirty-eight.
I do know that a lot of Bristol Aggie's property is listed on the MACRIS website. So those would be forms that would be updated, you know, through this survey, hopefully, um. But I, I definitely can contact um, the superintendent at Bristol Aggie to see what happened and we could collaborate together to see what we could do. Cause that is a significant area.
Thank you.
So, um, thank you still much for coming and providing us an update, Mrs. Gales. I also think that these updates um, at the beginning of the Board of Selectmen's meeting are a good chance for folks to have an understanding of the work that the Historical Commission is doing. So anytime you would like a slot on our agenda, you, I hope you'll let us know, okay?
Oh, absolutely. I'll let you know. Thank you. Okay. And if you have any other questions, please let me know.
Thank you.
Hey, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. You have a good night.
Yeah, you too.
So at this time, we're going to go to discretionary spending requests. And um, I didn't receive any. Mrs. Brady, did you know if we had any discretionary spending requests? But I don't think we did. We didn't. Um, and at this time, I would love to go to public input. So if you would, if you're here for public input for something not related to on the agenda, something on the agenda, um, I would ask that you unmute yourself and speak, but if it's public input related to something on the agenda, I do request that you hold your public input until we make our way to that agenda item. Hearing none. Selectman Pacheco, did you want to lead us with the scheduled announcements?
Sure, we have a few of them. The first one is from the Board of Health. It's dated November twelfth, twenty twenty. In light of increases in COVID-nineteen cases, the Board of Health, in conjunction with the pandemic task force in the Board of Selectmen's Office, made the decision to close Town Hall and Old Town Hall to the public, beginning Monday, November sixteen, twenty twenty, until further notice. Council on Aging and Library remain, remain closed to the public as well. Town Hall employees will be working inside the building and, and departments may be reached by calling Dayton Town Hall at five oh eight, six six nine, six four three one, and listening to the prompts. All in-person meetings are canceled. All conferences or committee meetings shall be held remotely via Zoom. All Council on Aging, Primetime and Library programs that are currently scheduled at Old Town Hall will be canceled until further notice. Payments or any correspondence can be left either in the outside drop box located by the walkway at the entrance to Town Hall or the one in front of Old Town Hall. Payments may be made by mail and online via the town website, www dot Dayton dash ma dot gov. Signage will be placed at all playgrounds, basketball courts and the track behind Town Hall, informing the public that their use of masks is mandatory. There may be a fine of five hundred dollars for non-compliance. There will be no changes to trash pickup or recycling. The Health Department continues to remind everyone to take personal precautions, including proper self-care and hygiene such as washing hands, frequently cleaning touch points such as doorknobs and common areas services. Thank you in advance for your cooperation during this time. Sincerely, Board of Health, Town of Dayton. This time of the year, please note that the town-wide ban is in effect from November first, twenty twenty to April first, twenty twenty. No person shall allow any vehicles to remain in the street so as to obstruct snow removal. Dayton Police Department will take notice. The Town of Dayton's food bank distribution will be held next on November twenty-first, twenty twenty, that's this coming Saturday. Located at the Town Hall, nine seventy-nine Somerset Avenue, Lower Level, as a drive-through. Dayton Town Hall will be closed November twenty-fifth through November twenty-seventh, in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. The Holiday Pot fundraiser, Take and Make at Home Kits, sponsored by Russo Farms, fifteen twenty-two William Street. Pre-registration and pre-payment requirement, a portion of proceeds go to benefit the Dayton Historical Society. Call Russo's Farms at five oh eight, six six nine, six nine eight eight. You want the public to know that I am a member and officer of the Dayton Historical Society. The Dayton Council, uh, Cultural Council has extended their deadline to Monday, December fourteenth for organizations, schools and individuals to apply for grants that support cultural activities in the community. Last year, the Dayton Cultural Council distributed about fifty-eight hundred dollars in grants. These grants support a variety of artistic projects and, and activities in Dayton, including exhibits, festivals, field trips, drawtime honest residencies or performance in schools, workshops and lectures. The library is working with all, uh, the Dayton Public Library is working with Old Collin Historic, uh, History Museum, I think it's Historic Museum, to offer virtual pro- programming. Anyone interested in participating live can contact Justin Tavarez at J.Tavarez at salesinc.org. Programs will be, also be recorded and put up on the library new YouTube website. That's it for announcements.
Thank you so much. And at this time, under Old Business, we have the pleasure of acting on the BWC Green Book LLC Solar Pilot Agreements, but I did want to give my colleague, Selectman Gulart, the floor before we do so. Um, if you had any remarks that you wanted to make, Selectman Gulart?
Um, uh, I want to thank everybody who worked on this with me. Um, the, uh, amount of work that had to be done because these two pilot agreements are the first ones that have been submitted to the voters for approval since I think it was 2016, uh, when only one was approved and two were, were tabled because they weren't appropriate at the time. Um, I don't want to miss anybody, but I thank, um, Attorney Matt Costa, uh, Mrs. Carol Borogad. Carol and I spent a lot of time working on this. We spent an afternoon in court when the town got dragged in there on a, another solar project. We all learned from that event. Uh, thank you. Thank you, Judge Maguire. I'm sure you're not listening tonight, but, um, the ruling in favor of the Town of Dayton really added a great deal, uh, and was certainly taken into consideration when we looked at the wording. Uh, I am very happy to say that the, both pilot agreements, and these are for properties on Tremont Street and Mill Street, uh, the agreements were approved, uh, with no discussion, a unanimous votes. The two of them together total $501,000 in tax revenue to the town over the next 20 years. They are heavily front-loaded, which means the first 15 years is when the town will get the highest amount of money. It's, they're not all divided up just evenly for 20 years. That's not the intent of, uh, of, of all of us who are involved in negotiations. Uh, it's a, uh, tax payment plan that allows the companies to spread out their payment, but they know every year how much tax money they owe to the Town of Dayton. And a pilot agreement saves the Town of Dayton for having to have professionals who deal with these kinds of projects come in every year and figure out the value so that we can send a tax bill. I will note that, um, at the MMA meeting I attended today, uh, before we got into the agenda, I announced that Dayton had successively approved two solar agreements, that it went very well, and I told them about the, the dollars and the years. And the executive director at MMA, uh, said, "Congratulations, very good." And the, uh, that was Jeff Beckwith. And John Robinson, the legislative liaison, said, "Very good. Pilot agreements are the way to go." So I just want to thank everybody that worked with me on this, and Jackie Firsty at, uh, uh, the solar company, uh, and Mrs. Brady, uh, last Friday, Mrs. Brady, uh, Jackie and I were on a, um, Zoom call to put down the final, uh, wording, and, uh, thank you to my colleagues. Um, I sent them out at quarter of 12 on Saturday night, and I heard from Dr. Z. So anyhow, thank you very much. And the good news is, we are working on another solar agreement. Uh, this one will be in excess of $770,000 over 15 years, heavily front-end loaded. And the good news is, we now have a boilerplate solar agreement. So anybody coming to town, we can hold up the form and say, "Fill in the blanks," and we'll negotiate the dollar payments. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gulart, was that quarter to 12 PM or AM?
My, my eyes were still open. Yeah, it was, it was PM.
I was fast asleep for about three hours already. I want to thank Mrs. Gulart for all the work that she's done. She really emphasized the importance of having it front-loaded, uh, something that, that I did not pick up on, uh, but she did. And, uh, she's done a lot of work on this, and I, I really appreciate it, and it was the right thing to do. And the town, uh, may not fully understand how, how important it was to get the money, most of the money, a good part of the money upfront.
Mr. Pacheco, I got to tell you, after Dr. Z and I went through one painful Selectmen's meeting about four years ago, we said there would never be another pilot agreement, never. And then we get dragged into court on one, but we prevailed, and, uh, we really felt this is the right way to go. But we all learned, all three of us have learned from this process. So I think we're in good shape now, going forward. The town is in good shape.
So I, I, I just want to thank everyone involved, especially you, Selectman Gulart. Um, I, I think we've come a long way. We have boilerplates for these important documents. We have a boilerplate for solar pilots. We have a boilerplate for host community agreements. And I just want the public to know how important it is to have good, sound, negotiated, beneficial to the town, still beneficial to obviously the commercial entity, of course, or else they wouldn't negotiate or agree to it. Um, but we've come a long way, and I want to thank you because this, these were the first two solar pilots that I've ever supported. I didn't support the one at town meeting many years ago, primarily because I felt, um, and no disrespect to anybody who was involved in it at that time, but for me, it felt a little bit like cart before the horse in terms of signing it before the voters get their say. And so I just want to thank you for allowing the resident, doing it rightly, allowing the residents to get their say before we, the Board of Selectmen, sign them. I mean, I think that that was really, um, one of the reasons I supported them. Of course, the front-end loading, um, we have a lot of things in the pipeline, um, and this will go a long way. And the third one will go a long way as well, Selectman Gulart, um, to helping us address, uh, the needs. So thank you so much.
Well, in addition, um, besides the one that, let's say is on the stove right now, uh, the 770,000 plus one, um, I had some discussions today. There are two others, uh, and I'm hearing that they're going to be looking for pilot agreements. So I have no idea what kind of dollars we're talking about, but, uh, we do have a number of solar farms that don't have pilot agreements for whatever reason. But, um, yeah, I agree with you, that first one that was approved, I'm the one who took it to town meeting after the fact, uh, it got the vote. Uh, but I also want to point out, the pilot agreements we have negotiated now and going forward, not only protect the town, they protect the real estate owner where this, these are located. That was an issue four years ago. And so, uh, hopefully, landowners will get a good deal with whoever they're dealing with, and, uh, the town is protected, uh, tax-wise.
And with that, at this time, I will, um, I, I assume we'll take a vote, even though, um, we recommended them last night, and I, we all voted to support them. So with that, I will entertain motions.
Mr. Chairman, I will happily make a motion that we, the board, vote to sign the pilot agreement with BWC Green Brook LLC for both the solar farm at 903 Middle Street and the solar farm at, and Mrs. Brady, you have the number on Middle Street, the location number?
Give me one second. I have it.
Yeah, it should be in the, on, right in the front of the agreement.
One second. 624 Middle?
624 Middle Street.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion?
Friendly amendment?
Yep.
As, as approved at town meeting on November 16th, 2020.
You okay with that, Selectman Pacheco?
Yes, I am.
All right. Um, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent work. This is really good news for the town. Um, and so, uh, Mrs. Brady, uh, I'm going to be in touch tomorrow. Um, I think we could reach out to Gilfoyle. Um, is everyone okay with us doing, um, a press release about this?
I think it's fine.
Okay. We will do that tomorrow.
The good thing is, too, other potential developers will get the, uh, message that, uh, we're open for business, uh, we're easy to do business with, and we're working for the good of both the developer and the town and the landowner.
Absolutely. All right. So next on the agenda, bear with me just a moment. Okay. Sorry, just a second. I had to scroll back. Okay. So next on the agenda is new business, appoint Nicole Mello to the ADA Commission. So I will entertain motions.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Nicole Mello to the ADA Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Under discussion, um, Selectman Pacheco, how many, after this vacancy is filled, how many more? Is there one more position?
Two, two more.
Two more?
This would give us five. And it's important that we appoint her because, uh, we recently could not have a meeting because one member could not attend. We didn't have a forum, uh, and this would give us a better opportunity to have a meeting. So, uh, and it's my understanding that the ADA, ADA coordinator spent about a half an hour interviewing her, and, um, he recommends that we appoint her. So I would ask the board to approve this, uh, motion.
Absolutely. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion carries. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda, we have appoint Mrs. Karen Brady as temporary liaison to Sursage Board of Directors. Um, for anyone who is unaware, public viewing this meeting, um, the town administrator was really instrumental in, um, setting up the partnership between the Town of Dayton and Sursage. Um, and she also served, um, on the Sursage Board of Directors as the liaison from our town, however, um, with her departure to Swansea, that leaves this important, um, position vacant. And I'm glad that Mrs. Brady is stepping up and wants to serve as the temporary liaison, um, with the understanding that with, when the town administrative vacancy is filled, um, they may transition back into the temporary liaison position unless Mrs. Brady really likes it. Who knows? So with that, I will entertain a motion to appoint Karen Brady as temporary liaison to the Sursage Board of Directors.
So moved.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion carries. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And next we have something, you know, sad, accept the retirement of, uh, Mr. Jeffrey Gagnon. Bear with me just a moment, just going to the letter. This is dated November 6, 2020. Uh, to whom it may concern, from Jeffrey Gagnon, uh, please be advised, I will be retiring on December 23rd, 2020. My last official day will be December 22nd, 2020. Respectfully submitted, Jeffrey Gagnon. And at this time, I will entertain motions to accept the retirement letter of, uh, Jeffrey Gagnon with thanks and appreciation.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Um, I just want to, um, thank Mr. Gagnon. He served, um, in capacity as mechanic, um, on the highway department, but he was much more than a mechanic. Anyone that, that talked to Jeff or knew Jeff, um, or knows Jeff, excuse me, um, knows that, um, he was very versatile. He had a broad repertoire of skills, um, and was useful and handy in very many capacities for the highway department. So sir, thank you for your years of service. Um, it's been a pleasure serving with you, and you will be missed. Any further discussion?
Do we know how long he's been employed?
That's a good question. It's been quite a while. I will definitely be second on this.
I'm thinking it might be over 30 years.
I think so.
I don't want to make him sound old, but.
Experience, Selectman Gulart, period.
Jeff, enjoy your retirement. You've, you deserve it.
Absolutely.
I wish you the best of luck.
Absolutely. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion carries. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda this evening, we have the, uh, to discuss the parking lot security camera, and bear with me just a moment. I need to scroll down. So, oh, I'm sorry, there's nothing in the agenda on this. So my understanding on this is a, uh, per the, per state regulations for election day, we did have to install a, um, camera at Town Hall to sort of watch the drop box where people were, um, depositing mail-in ballots and such, or absentee ballots for election, the 2020 election. Um, this is on the agenda because since we already have it, we just want to discuss whether we would like to keep it. I know that sounds silly. Um, it doesn't necessarily have to watch the drop box. I think it's a good idea personally that we keep the camera outside and have it watch the outside, maybe the parking lot. Some people have late meetings. Um, we have late meetings sometimes when we have them in person, and, um, we have people come, you know, walking out to the parking lot. Um, so I just wanted to gather what everyone's thoughts were on, um, the security camera.
Do we have a security camera at the Old Town Hall for the drop box? Do we have it for both drop boxes?
Is there a drop box at Old Town Hall?
No, it was just done for the election. There is a box, yes. It's, uh, it's near the electric charging stations, I believe.
Is it permanent?
Yes.
I think so, yes.
But that camera was specifically because of that box being the official election ballot drop-off spot. I'm certainly in favor of leaving it, and as a matter of fact, if we could install one at the Old Town Hall.
Okay.
And, uh, if they're not expensive.
Yeah.
I don't think it's, it's unreasonable to have them, uh, one looking out over the back and.
Okay.
Uh, you know, it's, it's, I think it's a good idea.
Can, if we're going, team, if we're gonna have more than, if we are going to ask to purchase more, can I have a motion on that, just so we have, you know, guidance to purchase, um, more?
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we look into acquiring additional security cameras for both Town Hall and Old Town Hall, and report back at a future meeting, could be the next one or the one after, what the cost would be, and then we can act on the actual, uh, cost.
Okay.
And, uh, that, that can be one of those, uh, um, what, what is it? The requests that we have that, that we haven't had any for a few weeks?
Discretionary spending request, yes.
Yes.
I have a feeling.
Selectmen will have a discretionary spending request.
I actually think this will be under the, what the threshold is.
Yeah, probably. But at least we can let the public know.
We'll have a paper trail.
How much money, if we vote to do it, and also make them all aware. If we do it, there will be security. I mean, most places have it now anyhow, so I think it's a good idea.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to purchase it, uh, to look into, excuse me, purchasing additional, uh, security cameras for Town Hall and Old Town Hall. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion carries. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good work. Next, we're going to discuss the extension of the municipal electric rate to MMA Constellation Energy Program. Selectman Gulart, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, I think you'll remember, this goes back, uh, a few years. Um, I'm not sure if Selectman Pacheco was on the board, but through MMA, I found out that MMA has a special, uh, pricing plan for municipal buildings through Constellation Energy. Constellation is MMA's, uh, energy program partner. What we found out was, after, uh, Constellation- What we found out was, after Constellation MMA did this study of all of our electric bills, this only applies to those that have national grid, TMLP's rates are lower anyhow. So they were able to quote us a price for several years that was one penny less than the aggregate rate that all of us get as residents who have national grid. So the program has time limits. So I had sent a note to Charlotte Diogo, who happens to be a Swansea resident, Mr. Pacheco. She's the Constellation rep for us. And she sent me the new rates, and I think you should have them in front of you. And she wants to know, how many years do we want to commit? And if you look, December of 2022, the current one we have right now goes through would be the end of November of 22. So December 22 to December 23, our municipal electric rate per kilowatt hour would be 09.89. And as you can see, then there's the two-year program and a three-year program. My personal opinion is we should go for the three-year program, December 2022 to December 2025, at a rate of 09.98 cents per kilowatt hour. That may be a little bit more than a penny per kilowatt hour because we just got, remember, we just got that slight increase that Mrs. Ehrenstein told us about? On our municipal rate, it was like six dollars a year, the average customer would have. So based on our experience with the first couple of years under this pricing program, I think it would be wise to go out to the three years. And as she says, these are the new renewal rates, when she says today, she means currently through MMA. And they'll give us updates as often as we like. But other than the fact that we provided all of our electric bills, they did all the work, they got all the data, and this is what they've been able to do for us. And this is something we have because of our membership with MMA, so I think it's a good deal.
Selectman Goulart, I just had one question. Is there a reason, is the reason you are, because it's not the cheapest, the three-year, but I'm assuming you are leaning towards the three-year rate because we're locked in, right?
Well, we're locked in, and what we do know is the current rate that we have for munis, for for private customers, for us, the three of us, and everybody else that has national grid. We know the rate is over 1.0 and it's under 11 cents. But that rate, I don't see that rate dropping lower. And if we could lock this one in at less than a fraction, less than 10 cents, I'm sure that our next aggregation contract is is going to be higher than it is right now. So I think our savings could be more than a penny per kilowatt hour. Which, when you say, oh, what's a penny? Well, when you think of the kilowatt hours the municipality uses, it's substantial. And I can tell you that immediately around us, Somerset has been, I think they just renewed, and I don't know if they went to a five-year contract, I know they've been in the program at least five years. And their, their town administrator, Mr. Brown, speaks very highly of it. And there are other communities around, but I know I've had discussions with him because before we got into this, we wanted to make sure it was the right thing to do. So I'm thinking there will be an increase when our rate goes up under aggregation because that contract is in the works, because they always negotiate at least a year ahead of time. And if we could keep this under 10 cents, I think it would be good for the town. That would be the only reason.
So do you anticipate it, anticipating going up in two years? Because the two-year rate is Mr. Dr. Z has mentioned is the best rate. And in three years, it goes up. Now, we're not talking a lot of money, so I get that. But you feel that we should lock into the three-year rate, that that's?
My, my concern is the sentence she says, below is today's renewal pricing options through MMA. These, these can fluctuate from time to time. So if something happens, we were to delay and say, let's ask her, let's like next March. Because again, our contract is still in effect right now, so we've got time to play around. There's no guarantee next March, March of 2021, that these rates would be lower. And I would expect they could be higher. So that's, that's what I'm looking at right now. I think we all know our own electric rates will increase under aggregation. They just went up slightly, just, you know, fractionally. The new contract will get negotiated. And I will also remind you that under aggregation, we had a previous price adjustment shortly after that contract got negotiated because the company just couldn't meet what they said they were gonna do. And rather than have all the communities start over again, and agreement was negotiated and the rate went up a little. But that, that would be my only thought. If we don't go three, we can, we can pick any, we can do a couple of years, whatever. All I'm saying is, when we go back, there's no guarantee the rate is going to be less or better than what we're looking at. And I know on the market, what you and I are paying under aggregation right now is higher than any of these. And again, it's only municipal building, so.
Selectman Pacheco, were you leaning towards a different one? Is that why you were asking? I, I was leaning towards the two-year, only because it was the, the least.
Somebody just parachuted in. Yes, I was also leaning towards two.
Are you okay with that, Selectman Goulart?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I, I'm, I just, I just know it was time to find out what was happening, and I wanted to bring this to the board so we could. I, I wouldn't want to wait for the contract to expire next October and say, oh, we should have done this a year ago when the rate was better. So, yeah, any, any, any of these are fine with me.
Do we need to take a vote on which timeline and rate we prefer?
We have to give her a notification, what, what the timeline and what the prices, yes, we have to vote. Because she will, she will then do what is necessary to get us the next contract at the price and through the time period.
All right. If there's no further discussion at this time, I will entertain motions.
I'll make a motion that we accept the rate for December 2022 through December 2024 at the rate of 0.0987.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, that motion carries. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We received a letter regarding.
Dr. Z?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Just to follow up, I will send an email to Charlotte to let her know what action the board took and ask her to process any paperwork, get it back for signature or whatever. Whatever needs to be done to get it back to us, just so that we're all set for the next couple of years.
Thank you. Sounds good. Tell her we miss her, she's great. I love, she's signing her emails to you, Shar, so you guys have become.
Yeah, evidently.
Friends, yeah, I like it.
And I will copy, I will copy the both of you and Mrs. Brady on the email, so we're all in sync, okay?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
So we received a letter dated November 10, 2020, to the Board of Selectmen from the Town Treasurer and Town Clerk regarding a wage survey clerical employees. And it says, we are requesting that the Board of Selectmen do a wage survey slash, slash, excuse me, classification for the clerical union employees. We believe that some of the positions need to be reviewed because the duties have changed and the part-time versus full-time positions also need clarification. This request stems from the most recent signed clerical contract. Thank you for your continued cooperation. Mary Hathaway, Treasurer Collector and Sumideras Town Clerk. So my, I just have a few comments. This was something that former Town Administrator Ehrenstein had mentioned to us, I think, just very briefly. It probably wasn't something that got stressed. And this did arise out of clerical union negotiations, as I understand. My understanding was that she was in favor not of a, of a wage survey specifically for this union, but a general town-wide wage survey. And it, it, I know it's been many years since our town, oh, the dog is so cute, Ken. I know it's been several years since that we've done a town-wide wage survey or had one conducted. My only concern with this request, and this is for my colleagues, is I do have a concern that if we were only to do a wage study for the clerical union employees, one of the other unions may file a grievance, or a complaint, rather, and may be justified in doing so. And so those were my comments on this request. And anyone, you, you have the floor.
Yes, this was discussed when we negotiated the clerical union agreement. And we talked about a town-wide wage study. But I'm not sure what that includes. Does that, for example, include the highway department, the police department, the fire department? Because they all have contracts now.
Selectman Pacheco, I'm, honestly, that's a really good question, and I'm pretty sure Selectman Goulart's the only person that can answer it. Because I know a town-wide one was done. I don't know what that encompassed, to be perfectly honest with you, which departments, which. Do you have any insight, Selectman Goulart, on that?
It was, to the best of my knowledge, it was not town-wide. And it goes back to, to, it was prior to 2007. I heard about it when I came on the board. There was general disappointment, disagreement, whatever. It led to the formation of the clerical union. So here we are, fast forward, we have collective bargaining agreements with all of our unions. And each union has had an opportunity to bargain in good faith and ask for salary increases, benefits, whatever. My first thought is, what would the benefit of doing this wage study be? I can tell you, as I said, I walked into the other one, I didn't have anything to do with it. There was general disagreement, they weren't happy. I think the study was, it did result in the clerical union being formed. However, my concern is that I would not do a full town-wide wage survey because that might indicate to the union and to our employees, union and non-union employees, that there's gonna be a wage study, and people think that means there's gonna be an increase in wages. Well, first of all, that can't happen under collective bargaining agreements because you must bargain them, so that isn't gonna happen. The other thing is, if the purpose or the suggestion of a wage study for those covered under the clerical union contract, be done. Again, what is the reason? If there are some individuals who are not happy with the contract that got settled because somebody thinks they should be getting more, and sometimes employees have a tendency to compare what they do with a fellow employee in another department. In all honesty, a wage study might indicate that somebody's gonna get an increase. There's no guarantee to that. You could do a wage study with communities all around and find out that the average wage for clerical employees is less than what we're paying.
Selectman. Not, 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 my apologies, not to interrupt, but that is a very good point. And I just want to let you and Selectman Pacheco know that when I received the letter, I did go down to speak to the Treasurer Collector and Clerk, and I did let them know that, that if a wage study were approved, that it may come back and say that our employees are actually paid more than what the average is. And, and, and again, depending on how the average is calculated, right? But I did make that clear, and they seem to be understanding of that point, so.
My other thought is, excuse me. My other thought is, if there are employees who truly feel their job has changed significantly, and they should be reviewed for a different step or however you do this, you know, a different place on the negotiated salary schedule, that they go to their supervisor and make their case with their supervisor. I can also tell you, when they had that wage study done years ago, because I saw the results of it, it had already been done. And then there was another one done after that. All they did was copy the original job descriptions and duties that had been submitted. My opinion was totally worthless. I think any employee who feels that their job has changed and they should be reviewed for additional compensation, they should meet with their supervisor, that supervisor should discuss it, and they should write something down. And if the supervisor, department head, wants to bring back a specific recommendation based on specific changes for one employee or two employees, and brings them back to the board, or if we have a town administrator and it comes to the board eventually, I think it's fine. I really think spending money for a wage study, I don't think it's gonna resolve issues if people are not, and when I say people, I'm not talking everybody. If individual employees think they should be reviewed. I, I really think it should be handled in-house. I should, I think it should be handled one-on-one. If an employee can present to their department head and show, you know, two years ago, I wasn't doing this, but now this happened, and I've taken this on, and this has happened, and well, changes in election law, if you want to look at that and what that entails as far as in the town clerk's office, or something in the treasurer's office, you name the department, all right? And the department head says, you know what? I think you're right. I'm willing to take this to, whether it's the TA or the Board of Selectmen, and it can be discussed. By the same token, if an employee says to the department head, I think I deserve more money because so-and-so does such-and-such, and they get more money. As a department head, I'd say, no, no, I'm not taking that to the Board of Selectmen. Let's get it documented. Let's put this down and show exactly what changes occurred. That would certainly consider our merit discussing additional wages. Wages within the negotiated collective bargaining agreements. Because we all know, you can't go outside of what's been negotiated, and you can't give somebody, we're gonna give you this, it's not in the contract, it can't happen. And Selectman Pacheco just went through the process, the negotiation process. And Dr. Z, you're on another bargaining, I mean, you sit on a couple, actually, but we've got to live within those collective bargaining agreements. And so personally, I'm willing to listen to any department head who can make the case, document the need, and show the change. I'm willing to listen and see what can be done. I, I will just mention to you, remember, Dr. Z? We had a similar case years ago, and it went to arbitration, it got resolved, all right? But it wasn't just, okay, you want more money, you can have it, sounds okay. No. You have to go through the process because you gotta be fair to everybody. So to me, that's the, that's, that's the fairest way to do it.
Can I just add, though, that we did discuss this during contract negotiations, and we talked about a side agreement. I don't believe any side agreement was signed. I'm sure the board would have had it been made aware of it. I would like to review the contract just to make sure that there's nothing in this contract that says we're gonna have a wage study. And secondly, I would add that if we're gonna do this, let's have a town administrator hire for us. And let that town administrator get involved in this and give us some input on this. But duties have changed over the years. We negotiated a contract, we talked about, the wage study could show that some people should be making less, we weren't gonna change that. But they wouldn't necessarily get increases with future contracts, the kind of.
Oh, okay, so.
Some wages, but we can't, we can't reduce somebody's wage. We negotiated a contract, you all agree to it. But some, some wages may be increased. That has to be approved by the board, has to go before the town as far as funding. So it's not automatic, just because somebody's duties has changed. When I worked, you know, for the state, my duties changed all the time. I didn't get a raise every time something changed. You have to see what was on the plate when those changes happened, was something taken off the plate? I mean, it's a really complicated situation. She had indicated, town administrator, former town administrator. situation. She had indicated, town administrator, former town administrator, had indicated that we get in touch with the Collins Center. I'm not sure if Mrs. Goulart, if you're familiar with that? They're out of, reading of it, they're out of UMass Boston. And it's, they work with towns and municipalities, wages and other things that they deal with, and I think that they would do the study. It's going to cost money. So it's not something that we want to take lightly. I really do thank you all the way for a new town administrator. But let me, if you don't mind, let me look at the contract just to make sure there's not something in that contract. My dog just chased my cat. But just make sure that there's nothing in the contract that says that we're obligated to do this. We did have a conversation. We talked about a side, sign, a side agreement. I don't believe that ever happened. Maybe something that needs to be discussed with the union rep for the clerical union. But I think we ought to hold off on this a little bit anyway, do a little bit of investigation for us.
I'm happy to respect that, and maybe if we want to take this under advisement while we do our due diligence. But I, I, and I, I think I made this clear, maybe I didn't. But when I spoke to the requesters who requested this, I did emphasize the fact we are town administrator-less, and, you know, we are holding everything together and, and moving everything forward. But it is tough without a town administrator right now. And so I think that that's a very reasonable request, Selectman Pacheco.
You know, I agree with that. That's why I said whether it's a town administrator, a town administrator coming in now would be a completely neutral person, just like when I came on the board back in '07, and this thing was there, and people were not happy with it. We actually finally got the, I want to call it the instruction book, the rating book for the study that was done. And the person that did the study was kind of holding it close to his best and didn't want to give it up, and it was a matter of saying, we hired you to do the study. You've got to give that to us. It belongs to us. So we got it, and we gave it to a neutral party who was used to dealing with contracts and all of that. No major changes came back. Now, again, we had to deal with people being disappointed. Like I say, I was neutral because this wasn't done when I was there, and I was waiting for the, I'll call it the response from the qualified person. So waiting for a town administrator, I think, is good. And I really think that wage studies start out with, you know, write down everything you do. I don't want to see photocopies of stuff that was here before. And not only that, by having a town administrator being the, I'll call it the neutral person, that person is going to have to go through this and learn what's going on and give us their expert opinion. And then we, as a board, will not have been involved with whether it's a study or a review or whatever. They're going to get information given to us based on facts because we've got to make the final agreement on whether or not it's going to go forward, whether or not there's a cost involved. So, yeah, I, you know, I, I agree with Selectman Pacheco. That works for me.
Yeah, so it sounds like we're all in agreement. So at this time, if someone would like to make a motion to take this under advisement, maybe we don't need to mention a, a specific date. But let's just take this under advisement. I think that's a good idea.
Go move.
Can I just add a little?
Yeah, of course.
So the motion would be to take under advisement the possibility of a wage and job description, wage study job descriptions for future review after the, after we have a town administrator.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Under discussion, I just wanted to add, Selectman Pacheco, I know you mentioned a side agreement. I do believe if it were an actual side agreement or not, we would have signed something. So we didn't sign anything. So you may have had, like, a verbal understanding perhaps, but I don't think it was an actual agreement.
No, even, even a memo, even a memorandum, Selectman Pacheco would have brought that to us, and we'd have discussed it. Because nobody has the, as we know, the judge said the signing of the contracts is with the Board of Selectmen, so nobody else could have agreed to that, whether in writing or orally. I mean, that's, that's clear, so.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion carries. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda this evening, under correspondence, we have a letter to Metro South Chamber of Commerce. And this is a letter that we're sending to them. Basically, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but the last sentence is the reason why we're sending the letter. "The town of Dayton supports the Metro South Chamber of Commerce's application to position the Metro South region as an area of regional economic development importance and looks forward to working together on future initiatives to strengthen the overall business climate within the Metro South region." And so I think this was a request that actually came in to us, and that is why we filled out this letter. So does anyone have any comments, questions about this letter of support?
What do they actually do?
So I think they are promoting this redo program, and to me, it sounds like what they're doing right now through this redo program is they're assisting people, businesses locating different services, assisting them in permitting, referrals, site location services, in order to increase economic development in this area. So I guess that's what they're doing right now.
Okay, economic development really was the bright light that I saw. I would suggest before we send this letter, we talk to SERPID. That's our economic development organization.
Yep.
I just want to make sure, SERPID does not include the Brockton area, I believe. If this is a separate economic development district outside of SERPID, I'm fine with it. If it's, if somebody's going to be encroaching or stepping on toes, I'm saying, whoa.
And we're not going to bite the hand that feeds us, so I can...
Right, we got too many of those going on. The other thing, too, is if we truly are going to support this,
Yep.
I would put this on town of Dayton stationary, not on, on their stationary. That looks like we're saying they wrote it and we signed it, and I'm not comfortable with that. I, I would like to, to me, the town of Dayton seal and the letterhead is, to me, much more prestigious, just, you know.
That is a good point, and I think that that is well taken, and we should absolutely do that. What I would actually prefer we do when we take this item back up is maybe I can sit down and revise the letter. We'll do the research onto what part they service so that we're not in a, in a situation where they're in the region that SERPID services, because we obviously use SERPID. We'll do our due diligence on that, and then perhaps I can change the letter around so that it's, I guess, Dayton-specific and our Board of Selectmen specifically.
And I think when you talk to somebody at SERPID, they may be able to, if, in other words, if we're going to do it, if you, if you sent this letter to them and said to them, tell us what should not be in this letter, because we don't want to step on SERPID's toes. That, you know, the, the last paragraph, "The town of Dayton supports Metro South Chamber of Commerce's application, the position of Metro South region as regional economic development importance." Well, I don't know what that means, but that sounds like too close to SERPID. And we work well with SERPID. They've been very good to us, and they've got a number of projects right now, so. If we can help Metro South, that's fine.
My other concern, and I will check in on this as well. You, you brought, raised this in my mind, Selectman Goulart, when you were speaking. We are already sort of partnered with Taunton-Ariel Local Chamber of Commerce. And so I don't want to step on their toes either. So let me reach out to SERPID and to them and just gather some more information before I bring this back, okay?
And my other thought was, I remember Mrs. Aaronstein talking about, and I thought there was a Bristol County, none of its Chamber of Commerce or some kind of a group. And I don't know if we ever got involved with them, but it, it seems to me that was another chamber-type group, so, yeah, I think you're right. I think bringing, checking into that's a good idea, too.
Thank you. So can we table this for the time being until I have some time to do some due diligence?
Move to table, the letter in support of Metro South Chamber of Commerce.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion carries. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda is an email regarding drought status. If someone has it up already, do you mind reading it or summarizing, however you want?
Sure, I have it. This is regarding drought status. "The Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs has declared a Level 2 significant drought in the southeast region, Cape Cod region, and Nashua River watershed. Conditions in the other five regions across the state, the western Connecticut River, Valley, Central, Northeastern Islands regions have improved enough at Level 1 mild drought. Current conditions, due to over six months of below-normal rainfall and above-normal temperatures, the Commonwealth continues to be in a drought. However, recent rains during the latter half of October have improved stream flow, groundwater, fire danger, and other indicators. The southeast part of the state continues to experience dry conditions with well below-normal rainfall, elevated fire danger, and decreasing groundwater, while cooler temperatures keep risk of fire spread to a moderate. Continued fall leaf and pine needle drop causes risk of ignition to persist. What you should do in Level 2 significant drought areas, residents and businesses, minimize water use, limit outdoor watering to handheld, 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m., conserve water indoors, fix leaks. Cities and towns can limit outdoor water to at least handheld only between 5:00 p.m. and 9:00 a.m. Limit new landscapes and outdoor watering, implement drought or seasonal watering rates, establish water use reduction targets, establish a leak detection program. In mild level 1, my, we're not, we're not there, we're not in the mild." So that's basically it. That's the information.
Thank you, Selectman Pacheco. You would think after all that rain we had two weeks ago, we wouldn't, we wouldn't need one of these drought notifications.
We're still about eight inches short of, we should have had normal rain, rainfall.
It didn't make up for the rest of the season, I guess, unfortunately.
I got to tell you, I was planting tulip bulbs on Sunday, and I have one of those gizmos that you stick it in the ground and it pulls the dirt out. I get dry dirt, and that thing must be at least, I don't know, six inches tall that, when it takes the dirt out. It was dry underneath. I was surprised.
Yeah, I planted my tulips and daffodils about three weeks ago using this, it's an auger that you put on your drill. Is that what you used?
No, this is a handheld thing.
Oh, no, I used the, the drill, and it was dry. It was everything. There was not any sign of any moisture at all, so it was pretty dry.
Selectman Pacheco, I apologize. I skipped over Selectman's report accidentally. You have the floor.
It did not go unnoticed.
He doesn't have a report. That's why he did it.
No, no, I was going to ask, after we did the primetime, I was going to ask to go back to it. I'm a non-voting member on two committees, the Human Rights Committee. We had our first meeting November 9th, and we elected as our chairperson, Shawnt Cassidy. Our vice chair, Bob Henrich, and our secretary is Alicia Su Not, I think that's her name. Since we had our first meeting, one of our members had to resign. He's moving out of town. He had a family emergency and has to move out of town. I was looking forward to working with him. And he will be missed. So we're down to eight members. We need an official member at this point. We're going to meet again on November 14th. I guess it'll be a Zoom meeting. And we're going to begin to work on our mission statement as well as our goals. And I just want to say that the group of members, I asked them all to speak and asked them why they wanted to join, and it's a very diversified group, very well-motivated group. And I think we're going to do a lot. So we'll be bringing, whenever we come up with our mission statement, our goals, we're going to bring it back to the board, and we can, we can discuss it further with the board. The Commission on Disability, we've met at least four times. And we're continuing to meet. We didn't, as noted earlier, we didn't have a call for last meeting, so we had to, we'll reschedule that meeting. We're presently working on our bylaws. We started working on our bylaws at the last meeting. And we're also, as noted from our last Monday night's special time meeting, we're going to form a subcommittee with the Parks and Recreation to work on the north-facing playgrounds, and actually to work on all the, discuss all the playgrounds in town. So it's also a very active and motivated group of people, and I'm pleased that I'm able to work with them. So it's, it's two very good groups, and we're moving right along.
Yeah, excellent work. It's not on the agenda, so I apologize, but just very briefly, the Open Space Committee has met this month. We are expecting to approve our open space and recreation plan at our January meeting. At that time, if it is approved, we will be seeking letters of approval from the Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, et cetera, so that we can send a PDF of the completed plan to Division of Local Services with the Commonwealth. Once that's done, and Sean Cronin, not Sergeant Cronin, Sean Cronin with Division of Local Services, once he approves it or gives us the seal of approval, we will then be eligible for a future or next round of Community Compact Cabinet Best Practices, which is great. The Agricultural Commission actually met last evening, and we are, I would say, seventy-five percent, sixty-five to seventy-five percent done with the agricultural work plan, which is absolutely great. That will guide the work of the commission in future years, for many years to come, probably. They did request, and the reason I'm bringing this up is, we will vote to approve it or not with the Agricultural Commission. I am a non-voting member, of course, just like I am for the Open Space Committee. They did request that final approval come from the Board of Selectmen. So I just want my colleagues to know, don't be surprised if the agricultural work plan is on our agenda. They do just want to have that transparency with the board, and also they want people to know what we're doing. And so that's why they're requesting, it's probably more of a courtesy, but I just wanted you to be aware of that. Selectman Goulart?
Yeah, I have just mentioned, thank you to Veterans Agent Don Hershey. We had a appropriate Veterans Day ceremony, recognizing all those who have served. And that was on November 11th at the Veterans Memorial Park. And so thank you very much to Mr. Hershey, to the two young men who played the trumpet. That's Mr. Hershey. I didn't realize he played the trumpet and the drums. Very talented.
Many talents.
It was, it was, it was an appropriate event, and I'm glad we were able to do it, even under the viral pandemic that we're all dealing with. And it was nice to see people turn out also because they felt it was important. The town meeting passed, everything passed at town meeting except the article for the playground was tabled, and the article for the revolving account for the police department was defeated. Everything else passed as far as the road acceptance, the agreements, the money items. Everything, everything went okay, and I'm sure, folks, you'll be able to see that on Channel 9. Today was my MMA meeting, and this is kind of really appropriate because of what you were talking about with the the Human Rights Committee. Jeff Beckwith, executive director, was there, and as was John Robertson, the legislative liaison for MMA to the legislature. So anyhow, environmental justice and racial injustice, two very important topics at MMA. They are working with the, I'll call them their counterparts in the seven, well, actually, yeah, seven New England states to try to come up with some kind of a regional plan to deal with these two topics. One of the things they found is that there's a big need for education, because a lot of small communities said, we don't have any of that in our community, or that only happens in big cities. And what, what Jeff was saying was there were things that are inherent that no one really thinks of, whether it's discrimination in housing or in practices. And it's just the way it always was, and nobody meant to discriminate, but they don't recognize how this would affect somebody who is a minority person. So Phase 1, and this is going to be a long process, but Phase 1, MMA is working, they are going to be focusing on the role of education and how to have individuals, committees, groups recognize, I'll call them subtleties in these areas, that people don't, until somebody explains to them why it's a problem, they don't realize it's a problem. They are, there will be a training stage. MMA is looking at this to try to have this broad reach, but they're also keeping in mind that there's going to be a cost involved, and because they are MMA, they don't want to unnecessarily burden communities or states or whoever. So they're all working towards doing this to have some kind of recognition, normalization, orientation, and what's really involved with racial injustice issues and the racial, or if you will, the environmental justice issues. This topic set a few people off a couple of meetings ago, and if you remember, I wrote a memo to you, giving you a lot of details about what took place. I think having Jeff and John there today to really explain why MMA is just not going to whip this right through. This prob, these problems have been around for years. They need to be addressed appropriately. They need to be addressed through education and making people aware, and there needs to be orientation and training. So they're taking the leadership role of the seven New England states, so. And they even are talking about having something called, as the third step, train the trainer. So that's going to be more information coming down the pipe. They also work with a group called, and referenced GARE, G-A-R-E, all caps, the GARE website. So he said that MMA representing Massachusetts will be meeting with its counterpart in Connecticut, the Connecticut Conference of Communities, because of the New England states, Connecticut, Massachusetts are by far the most diverse states. Maine and Vermont are not. So as part of trying to figure out how this program will go, the most diverse states are going to be doing a lot of work on this to get the word up. So anyhow, there'll be information about that coming down the pipe, but I was thinking of what you were saying about the meetings you were having. So this is going to be a resource for our own Human Resource Committee. There was, there was also pushback from our committee because we had voted not to submit the piece of legislation that's been brought up for four years. It doesn't go anywhere. It deals with cost analysis. And we voted not to send it. Well, when it got to the MMA Board, the Board, which is over Jeff and over John, the Danvers Town Manager convinced everybody it should be back on there, and as a last-minute effort, they put it back in, and it's going to be submitted again. Well, there were members on our, on our committee that were very upset because they said they should have asked us why we weren't going to submit it. Jeff explained, look, we were totally surprised. We didn't know it was coming. It was the last-ditch effort. There were no meetings until February, and we had to get our legislation, legislation package put together. But Jack, excuse me, Jeff and John agreed, we got to do something about rules, so this, this doesn't happen again. No policy committee at MMA should be made to feel that a recommendation they made and voted on was sort of cast aside and ignored. So I hope we've got some feathers smoothed out that got ruffled. Quick legislative update, FY21 budget. Midnight, January the 5th, we roll over into, actually, January 4th, rolling into January 5th. The new legislation, legislative session begins. The Senate version of the budget is being wrapped up. It's going to go to a Conference Committee of Ways and Means before it goes to the governor. There are bills out there regarding police reform, transportation bond issue, environmental bills. So there'll be more information coming on that. MMA supports some police reform, but not anything that would increase costs to communities. So again, that'll be coming down the pipe. There is, there's still legislation in the works regarding property taxes, property tax statutes, and solar farms. And they again said pilot agreements are the way to go. Oh, this was really, I wasn't aware of this. MMA has taken action to really get involved with something that evidently is happening nationally. States are getting hit left and right by fraudulent unemployment insurance claims. It was just a heads up. They're trying to do what they can. But with the COVID and, you know, the programs for extending unemployment compensation, evidently there were those who aren't entitled, but they figured out a way to benefit illegally from the program, which has cost a lot of money. So they just wanted to give everyone a heads up. Revenue projections as of October collections were higher than anticipated. This is the money for the year we're in right now. And just like we've heard, FY21, we're kind of breathing easy because there is one-time money to use. There's a billion and a half dollars at the state level, this CARES money. They're hoping for more money from the federal government. So right now, they think FY21 is going to be okay, but as we all know, and as we've discussed publicly, everyone's starting to sweat FY22. So we are already aware of that, and we're trying to be conservative, proactive, kind of protecting our finances so that we, we can get through 22. So that was pretty much it. I am going to summarize this more in more detail, and I will email it out to both of you. And I told Mrs. Brady I would email it to her, so she could just insert it in to the record rather than, you know, prolonging the report. But it was a very good meeting, but some very important issues came up, and some of them really relevant and timely to what I heard from my colleagues tonight.
Thank you, Selectman Goulart. I think we're a little out of order, so I apologize. So now we have to acknowledge the donation to Primetime. We're pleased to inform you that Primetime has received a donation in the amount of $30. As usual, all donations are turned over to the town account and deposited in the Primetime Gift and Donations Account. Should you have any questions or need additional information, please do not hesitate to call, dated November 16th. So I will entertain a motion to accept this, acknowledge, excuse me, this donation.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda, since we don't have any official acknowledgements, are the minutes. So we have, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting of October 28th, 2020, please.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion carries. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I will entertain a motion to accept for review the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting of November 4th, 2020.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion carries. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And lastly, I'll entertain a motion for the release of the Board of Selectmen's Executive Session Meeting Minutes dated August 2nd, 2017, September 14th, 2017, and November 8th, 2017.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask that we hold off on these. Mrs. Brady gave them to me this afternoon.
Yep.
And I haven't really read them.
Okay. I'm happy. Selectman Pacheco, that's okay with you? I have no issue with that.
It's okay with me, yep.
Okay.
They're so old, but anyhow, I will look at them.
We'll hold these for our December 2nd meeting, okay?
Okay, thank you.
One of those meetings, Mrs. Goulart wasn't present. Jack Taylor was on the board, so it was only you, actually, to talk to see if there was a member. But I feel comfortable, once we, Mrs. Goulart has reviewed them, to support that they be released.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and Mrs. Madiris actually told me that she had had a conversation. Even if you weren't present at a particular meeting, like a Board of Selectmen meeting, if, when you read them, the consensus is, yeah, that happened, that's true. Every single word doesn't have to be okay, and you're just, in effect, approving them so that they can, in a case of a public meeting, they can be made public. Because you don't want minutes that aren't approved. So that's what, that's what, it'll be okay, because I noticed I wasn't at one either. So, you know, I just want to read them.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did we take, we took a vote on that?
No, we didn't take a vote.
No, we didn't have a motion. You asked if they, somebody would make the motion. I asked if we could hold off, so I should make a motion to table, I think. I move that we table action on releasing Executive Session Minutes for August 2nd, September 14th, and November 8th, all in 2017, and that we have them on the agenda for the December 2nd meeting.
I second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
No discussion.
Oh, that's right. It's a table. Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion carries. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And Selectman Goulart, you have the floor for approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. 28-21 in the amount of $111,576.43 payroll. 20B-21 in the amount of $247,764.22. 20C-21. You know what? We did approve these because the regional assessment's on there. Didn't we approve those already?
We haven't had them before.
Okay, I'll continue then.
I know, it's weird, though. I know why you're, yeah, I get it. I understand.
I always have trouble with that big number, but okay, so the next one is 20C-21 in the amount of $1,342.68. And the last one is 20D-21 in the amount of $2,741,967. The last one being the DR assessment, and of the last three, they're all accounts payable, be approved, all dated November 11th.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion carries. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Selectman Goulart?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. 21A-21 in the amount of $96,179.77. 21B-21 in the amount of $55,037.78. 21C-21 in the amount of $30,930.78. The first one being payroll, and the last two being accounts payable, all dated November 18th, be approved.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion carries. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we have any public input? There is no one but us on the call. I don't believe we've received any phone calls, nor any emails, nor do we have any public on Zoom besides us. So let's just give it a moment. Mrs. Brady has not informed me of any public input. Okay, hearing no public input, at this time, I will entertain a motion to enter into Executive Session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Number 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate. If the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, I do so declare update on gift of land from AstraZeneca. We will not be returning to open session after this.
So move. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. That motion carries. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Everyone have a wonderful evening. We don't have cable on, so, but I'll still say, good evening, cable. Have a good night.
Thank you.